President.
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 Here. President.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Please join us for prayer and follow the pledge allegiance.
Father God, we just beg your presence at our meeting tonight and would just ask for your goodness and mercy on our town and the people that live in it. And Lord, as we just ask you to diligently lead us and help us make decisions to honor you, Jesus. And just thank you for being a good and loving God and just lead us forward, Jesus. Thank you.
Come in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion to amend or adopt the agendas presented?
So moved.
A motion by Matt does second.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval minutes submitted by the court treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
A motion by Scott does a second.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Proof of allowance claims submitted by the court treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Motion by Matt does a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? I guess nothing's up here tonight. So our first ordinance is ordinance number two zero two four dash O R dash zero one zero. An ordinance amending overtime pay for police officers specific to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute traffic safety related grants.
Chief.
President, I worked on this ordinance with the chief. As you, as you can tell from the exhibit that was attached, there has been some issues across the state of Indiana of just being able to get certain officers to work traffic safety grants because there are so many opportunities the officers have to make a higher rate elsewhere. ICJI acknowledged it and is allowing for the grant funds to be paid at higher than normal rates. So double what a standard rate would be. And that's all this ordinance is allowing for is the officers of Sellersburg to be paid specific only to the grant funds. Double their base when working the traffic related protocol.
Okay, all right.
So I know Randy, you're getting ready to add. Every year the state has a pot of money that's distributed throughout the state. Okay, and they say, hey, this region's going to get X amount of dollars for Operation Seatbelt, aggressive driving, distracted driving, DUI checkpoints. So what has happened? The rate of pay, whether it's regular salary pay or overtime pay, has not kept up with the desire for officers to go out and stop cars for traffic infractions. So the environment since 2020 has really changed. And those officers are not working these grants. So the state has recognized that every year this money is being turned back into the state. So you're losing enforcement action. You're losing the presence of officers out. I mean, I can drive here from here to Gulf shores right now and probably see two state troopers the entire way. And they're, they're assigned to these smaller towns because they don't have enough people. No one wants to do this job anymore. And then the ones that are in the job are struggling with, hey, how much extra do I want? With having a camera shoved in your face and being called all kinds of names. And so now the state's saying, how do we combat this? We're going to have to pay them more and entice them to want to come out and do this type of enforcement action. Basically, society has done this to these officers to where we're sitting here going, I don't think coming out, that's worth my time anymore. Right or wrong, chief?
You're hundred percent correct. We just saw that, like I said, Sellersburg is actually in charge, Sullivan Police Department is in charge of the ICJI grant for all the departments in this region. And I have to sign off on this paperwork and he is correct. We're giving, we, not just Sullivan Police, all the departments down here that participate in this grant, we're sending money back because it is not being used. Because again, first of all, just so you know, this is when they're, this is on their off day. So this is not in conjunction with their normal shift. So they're giving up an off day to come out and do this. So that's why this enticement is supposed to try to, to get them numbers back up. We'll see. I'll be honest, I highly doubt it that this changes anything at all, but.
So does, is it double time?
It'd be double time. So if they was getting twenty, they get forty.
So it's based on each one's salary then?
It is.
Okay.
And we've had this conversation before. It doesn't come out of our budget. It comes out of grant money from the state.
Jeffersonville just, we just approved it for our officers and I agree with the chief. Friday, Saturday night where a lot of these DUI blitzes and aggressive driving details occur. Do you pass up a night with your family in the confines of your home? Or do you go out and do traffic patrol? Do you do it for your regular rate or do you do it to where you're enticed to go, you know what, this is a, this is a benefit to my family, so I'll give this up. It doesn't affect the town because they're state funds, so.
Does this include the officers following the school buses around or is that a separate grant?
Same grant.
Same grant, okay.
So in your department, chief, can you just use your officers or can you contract state or county?
No, this is individual. I'm, we are only, I'm only, I'm in charge in a sense for the whole grant. But Jeffersonville officers do, it's the same. We throw it out there and say, you could basically say, Jeff, Charlestown, how much money do you think you will need out of this grant for this period? And then we give them that. They spend it great. If they don't, it just goes back.
So he manages it for us? And he'll call and say, hey, I've got X amount of hours or X amount of dollars. Do you have anybody that wants to work it? And I routinely tell them no, because they don't. And that's, that's what we've done to these, these officers over the course of the last four or five years. That's just the facts of the matter. That's not opinion.
Okay, all right, so it states here, whereas the ICJ, J I has acknowledged that many law enforcement agencies had had difficulties in recent years getting officers to sign up to work traffic safety grants due to other opportunities that may have higher pay, which is attached Exhibit A. Whereas in order to combat this shortage of officers, the ICJI had permitted law enforcement agencies to pay their officers double their base rate when working traffic safety related grants issued by ICJI. And whereas this council upon the recommendation of the chief of police and in support of its police department and the community, now desire to amend the overtime policy for police officers specifically related to traffic safety grants. Now therefore it be ordained by this town council, Sellersburg, Indiana, as follows. Sellersburg police officers working traffic, traffic safety related grants controlled by the ICJI shall be paid two times their base rate per hour as permitted and recommended by the ICJI. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective on its passage and prolongation of it evident and by the affirmative signatures or the undersigned as the majority duly elected and serving members of this council.
All right, we'll vote to move this forward.
Okay, a motion by Matt does a second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Or Terry. Terry, Terry, I'm sorry, second by Terry. All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Motion to waive second reading of ordinance two zero. Motion by Matt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Motion to approve ordinance number two zero two four dash O R dash zero one zero. An ordinance amending overtime pay for police officers specific to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute traffic safety related grants.
So moved.
Motion by Matt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any last discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Go up. Okay, we had some unfinished business that Charlie presented to you all in an email about our community award survey that we've been discussing for the last few years. And Charlie was able to get some recipients and some responses. And we was going to reach out to the community as well, I believe.
Yeah, so really it's just a quick update on that. Community work survey went out. It is available through August first. I think so far we've got a hundred and twenty responses on it between the three. So it's been, you know, pretty good response on it. Basically, it's listed out. Here's what it is. Here are the three. Here's the name of it. Here's the, kind of the narrative as to why it is what it is. Please read the three and pick your favorite. So we have two front runners that are pretty close, separated by like two votes right now. I'll leave the names out of it, but just let you know. So at the first meeting in August, I'll have the final totals for that to give to you guys for further discussion and direction.
And what are we actually going to have? A plaque, an award?
You know, really, I think it's, Brad and I have had conversations about basically building like a, I know some communities will have a wall type thing. You actually put people's name on a wall or likeness on a wall somewhere, whether it's internal, external, at a park or whatever. You know, maybe it's a lapel pin, you know, a proclamation or something, a nice framed, whatever. We'll have to go through and I've got some templates from other communities they use for people to be able to submit names or people to that. You know, so like I said, I think it's just, we build it, you know, get a name and a direction, then we can build the application or the submission for acknowledgement for that. And then I think we'll leave it up to the council, you guys, to award that. If y'all want to do it that way, if you want to just leave it up to the executive that year, however you want to do it. But I think there's a, you know, some type of proclamation that gets nice matted and framed and like a pen or something. Figure something out to go along with it.
Okay, thank you.
And then a way, you know, you can do an annual meeting or twice a year or whatever, bring it to council meeting and do a presentation, a nice award or whatever. You know, kind of a narrative type thing.
Okay. All right, so we encourage everybody out there listening to get on our website and if they would like to share their thoughts, opinions on the three choices that we have at this time. Maybe possibly might have something else that they want to probably maybe bring to the table. But I think we're trying to focus on the people and reward the people that took the time to come up with some thoughts and ideas, so.
It's on Facebook, isn't it as well?
It is on our town social media. It's on our website, sellersburg.org under featured events. You just click on the link, gives explanation, then there's a link that takes you to a survey monkey's online survey. You don't have to put in your name or email or anything and it's set up. It's basically one vote per IP address. So if you get on your computer and you do it once or your phone, you do it once, you can't go in and do it over and over again. So, so one vote, one number, one count. One man, one vote, or woman, one woman, one vote.
Okay, all right, anybody have any thoughts or any thing? Okay, our new business tonight was something I know Charlie brought in front of us and was going to check on, the Clark County Animal Shelter interlocal corporation agreement, cooperation, I'm sorry, agreement.
All right, so way back when there was an interlocal agreement that was set up, basically years ago, there was the Jeffersonville Ogil, or excuse me, the Ogil Animal Shelter down in Jeffersonville. It was basically managed by City of Jeff. And there was a amount through an interlocal agreement that was submitted into incorporated communities of Clark County and Clark County government as a whole. And those expenses were then split based on population. I think our numbers have typically been running somewhere around that twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollar a year range. When the newest low, interlocal agreement came out, it jumped to sixty-eight thousand a year for the term of the agreement. Myself and Kevin Beatty and Mayor Hodges in Charlestown obviously had quite a few questions and started firing emails off saying, hey, what's up with this? Why the increase? There is a new director down there. Her name's Christie. She's been extremely transparent, very nice. I had asked some very specific questions to her from our perspective of saying, hey, here's how, here's how we use the animal shelter. And here, based on these numbers, is the amount per animal is what you're asking us to give you. And it's relatively unreasonable. She came back with some additional information about, there's a spay and neuter program that's not been communicated to us that we didn't know about that's available to our residents. There's quite a few programs down there, I think. And I think the way that this thing has been structured hasn't been explained very well. And I'm obviously not going to do it justice. So what I've asked Christie to do is come in, I'd like, I'd like for you all to have a workshop before the next meeting in August. And I've asked her and she is available to come and do that and basically present to you the animal shelter, its services, their cost, expenses, and basically come to you and say, hey, here, you know, here's, here's why the number is what it is. Because ultimately there is going to be an interlocal agreement as we go through the budget session. You know, that amount is going to be the amount or not, whatever, however it works out, we do need to make sure it's in there, so. If you have any other questions or anything, let me know. I'll be glad to forward you these emails to her and you kind of see the, the trail of information and data. She puts some stuff together and sent it back. I had some more questions on it. And I'm here Hodges has sat down with her, Kevin Beatty, he's my counterpart at Clarksville, has had some other conversations. We've had sidebar conversations about this thing. But again, I think it's only right to bring her in here and basically, you know, let her do the explanation instead of trying to chase this thing around and around and go.
Chief, how many animals a year does, does a police department potentially pick up?
I'd say exactly.
Okay, in transport, okay, Charlie, okay.
In 2023, we use the shelter for eight cats, fifteen dogs and a guinea pig.
Eight cats, fifteen dogs.
As of June, shoot, as of June 12th, I think we had two cats and nine dogs or something. No, but again, that's, that is what we as a town, the police department, animal shelter has take, has basically taken down there. That does not include resident surrenders. Right, so if your dog has puppies, they go to the animal shelter. You know, cat ass kittens, they go to the animal shelter, right? So, you know, there's, it's more than just the town and I think the animals, the animal control truck and the police department taking loose dogs down to the, to the shelter, which obviously I never really thought too much about. I thought it was just basically the department dropping nine dogs off in here kind of a deal, so. But again, there are vouchers that are handed out. They've tracked those numbers, how many vouchers. So you as a resident Sellersburg, you want to get your dog or cat spayed or neutered. Like Bob Barkey said, get your animal spayed and neutered, you can go down to the animal shelter and they give you a voucher that basically covers the majority of that expense. And I think their goal is, is to get the kill percentages way, way down, right? They don't want to put, they don't want to be putting animals to sleep because they're in a shelter too long. The way to do that is not get them in the shelter in the first place. So they put in some programs, I think, in place, there are an adoption program or you know, I can't think what's, not adoption, was it when you go?
Foster.
Foster home situation and then plus spay and neuter program and whatnot to try to get that, that percentage down. I think, I think they're like, they're putting down percents, like single digit percentage. I mean, it's pretty low. So, so again, I think it's just, I think it's only right to bring her in here before you all go into this interlocal agreement and bring it before you. I was taken aback. Jake and I had a conversation about this because when I sent the, actually chief said, hey, have you looked at this interlocal agreements? Said, no, I just haven't had a chance to look at it yet. It's like a 200% increase. No justification, no heads up, no justification whatsoever. So obviously that started a whole lot of conversation. And again, just bring her in here in a workshop, speak freely, have answered your questions and we go from there.
Charlie, my question is, when was the last increase? When was the last year?
I think we had, well, back in seventeen or eighteen, maybe. Wasn't it Michelle, something like that? It was, it was like eighteen and then went up to like twenty-three or twenty-four, maybe something like that. Ring a bell?
It was twenty-two and twenty-one, I think the last one we did, I think it was twenty-eight. So I mean, it's been incrementally increasing. And that was one of the questions that came up when we started some of the conversations, like, well, this budget hasn't increased. Y'all's ask hasn't increased to the animal shelter in quite a few years. Like, no, no, no. I'm looking at the last three interlocals and they've increased a little bit every year. Like, that's not an accurate statement. So again, you know, just trying to flush this thing through a little bit.
So community size, Charlie, I mean, it was Charleston be less than us or we're bigger than Charleston, Clarksville's more? Is it?
It's, yeah.
It's all different rates for each one.
Correct. I mean, it's based off of.
I mean, I guess there, and as you explain, I guess the services are greater or going to be greater because we're going from twenty-eight thousand to sixty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, it's a forty thousand.
Yeah, so for example, here's an intake, some intake paperwork they sent me and it was, it showed Sellersburg is us having two hundred and thirty-seven intakes that came out of, out of town Sellersburg. One of the questions I have for them is saying, how do you know that's the town of municipal proper? There's a whole, whole lot of people around here who've got an address to Sellersburg on driver's license, right? So I mean, when you start getting into this incorporated, unincorporated areas, how, you know, how is that tracked within these numbers? Because they also have on here, you know, Clark County, it's showing six hundred and twelve intakes from Clark County. So again, you know, I would like to know from their detailed intake report, you know, how do you know that's town of Sellersburg and not just Sellersburg Address, Clarksville? A lot of people have, live in Clarksville, town of, that have a Sellersburg address. Okay, so if we're taking these things based on population, I don't think some of these numbers weigh in a little bit. But I think for cost of service, just across the board, you know, it just needs to be reviewed and flushed through a little bit.
So that's two hundred and forty animals divided by sixty-eight thousand. It's a pretty decent number.
Yeah, so here's a number, some numbers that they shared to show. Based on the two hundred and thirty-seven numbers that we've got, fifty, fifty-one of them were owner guardian surrendered. Two of them were returned, thirty-five of them were seized in custody. Service in sixty-five of them and stray is eighty-four. Okay, so now I'm curious, seized in custody, you know, what's the definitions of these? Because according to our police roll over here and they're pulling reports, they're showing nine animals that they got called out on to from a, from a animal control truck.
That's just the dogs.
That's just.
We average thirty calls, dogs and cats every about every year.
But these are the ones that actually got taken down, right, to shelter.
Most of them are generally, and then some of them numbers where it says the owner gave it up. Just so you know, some of those numbers are going to be because there was an option given to them from us.
So when you use the term interlocal, from Jake, from a legal standpoint, I mean, is there a state statute that says we have to participate?
You're not.
So. Interlocal agreements, you know, are put into place to allow municipalities to share a common goal and share costs. And so you, you do have an option to say, you know, we are not going to participate in this interlocal agreement. And then the question then arises, okay, what are you going to do?
Well, we have, we have, we have a veterinarian in town. I mean, we work to deal with the local veterinarian. I mean, we only have fifteen or twenty, you know, animals. I mean, what are we, I mean.
Very well could be, you could easily put out an RFP, you could go, you know what I mean? Like you could do so and say, okay, for our animals that are captured, what are we going to do with them and what, what's the amount to take? You may, you may save the town money, you may break even, you may cost more. You know, I don't have the information to tell you.
As far as supporting someone to get their dog or cat neutered, I mean, okay, I mean, we can do a fifty-fifty match. You know, with the local veterinarian. I mean, I, I just, I'm just, once again, I just.
I just don't know when you have the strays, what, what to do there, right?
I just want to make sure that the, the term interlocal didn't mean that we was bound, bound by it, so.
Yeah, so this is a three-year rolling. They've got it broken down by percentage. You know, we are eight percent of the budget at sixty-eight eight under this new one. Forden's one percent, Utica's one percent, Charlestown's seven percent, Clarksville's seventeen, Jeffersonville's forty-two and the county's twenty-four percent for total budget. Are the total revenues from this interlocals eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Their, if you get on Gateway, their total budget and Jeffersonville's annual budget is eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So again, this is, you know, the full budget where, you know, as it's being laid out and explained, I don't think that they were splitting the entirety of the budget previously where they are proposing that now.
And, and just so everybody's aware, this doesn't include raccoons and squirrels and skunks. We have a separate entity that deals with.
This is domesticated creatures only. So again, I just want to kind of give you an update. I know it's been on the agenda. Been kicked back with, there's been, there's been a lot of conversations, been a lot of emails exchanged, back and forth and questions. And again, just, I think the nuance of this and the whatnot, just instead of just throwing it on the agenda for you all, review from an interlocal. You know, bringing the, the animal shelter director through invitation to come in here in a workshop and have a conversation, I think is proper.
I mean, I, I would like to have something, she's going to come, you might as well give her a heads up, some kind, I mean, I want to know how many people's employed, what they're, you know, what they're being paid.
And I've got some stuff I can send you guys. I just, I didn't want to send it to you blind. I wanted to kind of preface it before I sent it over to you.
All right, anybody?
Good.
Oh, for the record, I'll be abstaining from that due to my professional obligations. All right, have a, any general comments tonight? Nancy?
I would like to say I very much support the animal. We have to take care of our animals.
I, I don't think nobody was saying it. Maybe we'll just, how about we hire you, you be our animal director?
She'd probably do it.
I mean, from a town, from our perspective, when somebody gives you those numbers, we got a pretty good care of town, sounds like to me. And so. All right, well, thank you. Charlie?
On the website, you have a new event coming soon, the Brass Rabbit Antique and Handmade Market at Wilkerson Park on October fifth. So again, just another nice little event that's going to be put together through one of our local businesses, Chosen Goods. Striping started on your striping project. Started last week doing some markups. They've gone through and started doing striping. I've got the list of CCMG for twenty twenty-four dash two for the twenty twenty-five paving schedule. Submitted over pending JTL review and cost estimates that's due July thirty-first. I included those numbers in my budget estimates to Michelle. July, the end of July, Libs is telling me they're going to get back in here and start jumping on this, the rest of our paving for the summer here, then month. Still waiting on an actual schedule for that things. With that, I've also asked them for some additional work that wasn't part of the contract. So I may look at a change order depending on budgeting, what's left in the budget through, through some of the stuff in here as far as this contract. It's for the, you've driven through our parking lot lately, it's a little rough. So while they're in town, see about potentially working that into the, into the stuff. Obviously that stuff's not eligible for CCMG, so I have to cover it a hundred percent. But since they're doing some stuff right up and down the street here to try to loop that in. Next week, I got a meeting with Kipta here in the morning, then we're meeting with the county commissioners, Brad and Terry and I, related to the three eleven project. It is a county highway, but we're looking to get this thing. It is a county highway, but we're looking to get this thing funded through Kipta and NDOT. A majority of it funded, so very early preliminary conversations on that. Sound study was started underway last week, uh, so we're pending results on that. You've got, um, if y'all recall, went to an NDOT rollout of a new safety grant here about a month ago, a month and a half ago. Um, identified a couple of roads here in the town, um, for what's called a safety curb or safety edge for basically it's roads without curbs. Um, so there were a couple of areas up and down Allentown Road and Penn Avenue as you come off thirty-one. Towards got some extreme drop offs on there. So we're going to look at, um, potentially adding that into, um, this other grant, this, this grant application. Uh, is I think it's a ninety-ten. So I mean, it's relatively inexpensive. It's intended to be a, um, very inexpensive way for communities in Indiana to improve the crossroads of the state, um, to eliminate vehicular accidents. So it's very, it's very safety driven within that. Um, so we're going to look and move it forward with that. Once I get the cost estimates, come back on these things and see what they are first. Um, if it's within the budget or not, then our road funds. If you drive up Utica later this week, you're going to notice a new crosswalk. Was requested by the shops up here that we've got, Chosen Goods and Freckle Mama and Frame It and Tattoo Place there, obviously with the, new investment of these little businesses that we have downtown here. It's bringing up quite a few customers coming down, walking back and forth across the street. It's not really a good way to get across the street from a safety standpoint. So we're putting, we're putting in a crosswalk. We've got the ADA ramps that got put in this last week. We'll get, we're, we're installing the, uh, crosswalk markings this week, weather permitting. And then we're going to, uh, I saw these things. Can't remember where I was. They actually get mounted into the roadway and they're spring loaded. They stand about three and a half, four feet tall. So stop by state law, uh, when pedestrians present. So we're going to put it right in the middle of Utica Street. That way pedestrians present, you stop. So, um, we're going to put that in the roadway, see how that does with the markings and stuff, so.
Charlie, I was talking to one of the shop owners down here, uh, over the weekend. They were very appreciative of that crosswalk and, uh, the striping done, very much so.
It's needed.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's definitely needed. We decided to extend our operating hours for the swimming pool. So this week was supposed to start back to school week hours. Silver Creek goes back to school on Wednesday, but most of the other schools don't go back till next week. So we're extending the regular swimming pool hours. Luckily, a lot of our staff this year is college-based staff. Um, so we're able to stay open, look like staff a little easier compared to when school started. They go Thursday? I thought it was Wednesday. But so when school started, we basically lost ninety percent of our lifeguard staff. This year, we're going to be able to stay open through Labor Day. With the limited hours once schools hours start, but we're going to extend through regular hours through this week. So that was a little bit of the change in advertising. So we went on social media today. You all right? You good?
Yep, good.
Got your heart pumping there, didn't it?
Yeah.
Let's start your face, man. It's exciting. So, um, I think that's all I have for now. Um, I would ask about the budget workshop. Obviously we submitted in the stuff. I don't know, um, how you all want to do all that, so.
What's the pool closing date?
Uh, Labor Day.
Labor Day.
So we will, we will be open through August. Um, Labor Day is the last day of the pool when the pool closes. I think we actually closed a little early that day because we're doing the pooch plunge like the last hour or whatever, before we quote formally close the pool, uh, for the season. So.
So the splash pad will continue open for a while after?
Yeah. So once the, once the season closes for the pool, we'll shut the pool down. Obviously it's drained and cleaned and all that stuff. The gate will close, the outside gates will open and then the splash out will just be accessible. It's on a timer. So it'll only be accessible certain hours and we can change that. So with it being the first season, we're just going to kind of see what it does. There's cameras over there so we can see how often it's getting used and different things like that. So we'll, we'll leave it open and people can still enjoy that as long as the weather's.
The pickleball, there's no lights there for the pickleball. It's, it's as close as, does the park officially close at a certain time?
It's dark.
Till dark. Okay.
All right. So we got that, we got that. Any questions?
All good.
All right. Uh, chief?
This is a pool that does start, uh, Thursday. So we always hear about traffic. There will be more traffic Thursday. Leave earlier. Patience.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything to ask chief? Good. All right. Mike Harris, JTL.
Sir. Be quick. There's a lot going on, but there's not a lot that's new. Uh, Sunflower Valley, we are scheduling the meeting with Greg Pfeiffer. He's on vacation this week. We're going to meet with him. Um, next week and get the easements done. Plans are, plans are done. Easements are done. We just need to get everything, everything, uh, purchased. Got a few easements that are off of, they're not Sunflower Valley customers. We need to deal with IFA on how they want to acquire those, but that is all moving forward. Lead service line's the same. Um, thirty-one, both water and sewer. There's a meeting, um, Wednesday with NDOT. Trying to tie down, trying to get them to tie down for us what their schedule is so that we can, um, we can meet their schedule. Borden Sellersburg. There's a, there's a, a bunch of things going on. Um, we're, we're waiting on, from a big picture, we're waiting to hear what the funding is from, uh, Ready two point O. We're finalizing some things with Borden on a, on a piece of, uh, that, that's what segment one, one, one is. It's a piece of, uh, the, the system in Borden. Meeting with them next week to finalize some issues on that. So that's all, that's all continuing to move forward. The Ivy Tech two pump station elimination, uh, Geotech work's done, environmental work's done. I have a NDOT permit application that I need to get a signature on so we can get that submitted. Uh, so everything's moving forward on that. Well, um, State Road sixty, there's a force main relocation there. That is, um, everything's, everything is done. It's ready to go out to the contractors. So we will be, um, sending that out for quotes. And, um, get that work done here shortly. It should be, should be a week or two of work. It's a pretty small, uh, project. Treatment plant, we have been able to work with the contractor, get everything to the end. So they will be submitting their, uh, their final pay application, the final pay application for the job. Uh, with. Yep, that's right. And they have, they have acknowledged that. We have a letter from them acknowledging it and it'll be done as a part of the warranty work. So we're still working with them. Jim is meeting with Lori. We've got two options on how to handle it. Jim's meeting with Lori to get her to sign off on what the solution's going to be. Um, and then Charlie talked about CCMG. So that's it. Lot going on, just kind of keeping on right now.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions?
Thank you, Mike. All right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Jake? Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, Terry, you want to go first tonight?
Uh, I'm just going to kind of copy on what, uh, school's starting again and, uh, everybody be safe. I know those school bus stop arms, that's not a, not a suggestion. That's a, that's a law. Make, make sure that's one you abide by. So that's all I've got.
Okay. All right. Uh, Randy?
I have nothing, Brad. Thank you.
All right, Matt?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Councilman, my boy, he was gone last May, so I know you may have a lot of things you want to talk about.
Uh, just a couple of important ones, at least to my constituents they are. So I would ask that, uh, Charlie, how much does the town of Sellersburg pay into the, uh, county EMS contract that we currently have? Do you know offhand? What is our share?
We don't pay. Everybody thinks that Lloyd money from municipality can not work for EMS. It is not. Lloyd money to, uh, nine one one is just for nine one one.
So the town of Sellersburg does not currently contribute any money towards the, uh, contract for EMS?
If, if they do, it wouldn't be, yeah, no, I say, but the money, the people is, that I was addressed as the chairman of the nine one one board. With that, there was a lot of misguidance that that money from the Lloyd money went to EMS that we pay for the nine one one or central alarm, and that is incorrect. All that money that, for instance, Sellersburg and Jeff pays into central is just to run nine one one, has nothing to do with the, with EMS.
The county, the county does not have something similar to that where each municipality pays into a certain amount. Okay, good. Cause obviously, I mean, unless you've been living under a rock, there's a lot of turmoil going on. My main concern is for the residents of this town that there's not an extended wait time, which Chief Musavi has, uh, agreed that they would contribute, uh, extra manpower to help alleviate the situation. He couldn't guarantee that the town of Sellersburg would come first all the time, but probably ninety-five percent of the time. He only has two trucks. One's a little bit older that he has a hard time running. So I think it would behoove this council, even though we started this months ago. Contrary to some popular opinion, that's been on this, our, our radar and we follow this and, and manage this to this point. I think that it would behoove us to look at, in the event, uh, something catastrophic occurs, that we have a plan. Uh, whether that's with tri township or another provider, because I do not want to be up here answering questions from residents about little Johnny broke his leg and it took thirty-seven minutes for EMS to get there. Now, chief, I know that you know as well as I do as police officers, we would load somebody up in the car and take them to the, to the hospital. However, I do agree that doing your due diligence and ensuring that we're financially responsible with our tax dollars and that residents are getting what they deserve when it comes to paying taxes, that we, we have a plan and we monitor that situation. So that way we don't fall behind the eight ball. So, um, that was my, my, I've been asked numerous times by numerous people. I think we have great leadership here. I think, uh, we rely on the chief a lot. I think, uh, Chief Musavi's been great for the town of Sellersburg and tri township as a whole. But I also think that we need to take it upon ourselves at times where if it comes to allocating funds or contributing to what the chief, uh, needs in tri township, I know he has his own tax levy and his own tax base. However, he does service a large portion of almost, he does service all of Sellersburg. So we, we have some skin in the game when it comes there. And I, I don't want second to none services, whether that's from police, fire or EMS. I think our residents deserve that and I think they get that for the most part, but I want to make sure that we're operating up here, not down here. Well, what are we going to do? So it's just, just my comment for, for the night. I've been asked several times. I said I would mention it, but I, I do believe that we have done our due diligence prior to this, um, watching this unravel. And I'm not here to talk about all the other silliness and stuff to go, I'm here to make sure our residents get what they deserve and what they're paying for. So, um, if there's anything that I need to do or that we need to do as a town, as a board, as a whole, and we should do that and make sure that, you know, whether you're elderly or you're a small child, that there's not, when you're needed the most, somebody's coming. That's all I'm concerned about. So, um, other than that, sorry I missed last week. I had a scheduling conflict and Charlie forgot to remind me. So that's Charlie's responsibility.
So if I could real quick, chum in on that.
Sure.
I know Councilman, well, you and I've had conversations, Brad. I think you and I've talked, I can't remember. I think we've, we've talked, I've mentioned it a few times. When all this stuff started going on with, with the service provider. Chief Musavi and I've started having some conversations about their intention to do ambulance service. Especially in the event of something were to happen, um, from the current provider. As things progressed, obviously became more and again, I think the tri town has, especially their board, has gone above and beyond in forecasting and having a vision as far as, um, some of the concerns, uh, and issues that have come up on some of this stuff. So, um, I know there was a post that went on social media. I'm trying to find it real quick. I can't find it. I know we did a, a kind of a statement regarding that in our partnership with tri town, uh, on that. There have been numerous requests, both in person and email and text. You know, basically soliciting to tri town, what do you need? What do you need? The council, safety is paramount. They want to make sure the town is covered. They're not interested in providing ambulance service to the rest of the county, but you know, it's not our, that's not our role here. It's the county's role. But from an emergency perspective within town limits, what do you need? What do you need? I think at one point Terry and I even talked about, he talked about volunteering to drive to Texas for them to help pick up an ambulance. So whether it's financially or whatever, what do you need? Have the conversation, reach out. Those lines are open. I think there probably is some type of conversation that's going to be pending here before long, um, with them. Cause obviously I think with just their two trucks. I think they want to expand that a little more, but also with the trucks comes personnel and training. Um, it's a lot different being an EMT and a paramedic. The training that's required there and going out on the calls and some of the usage items that go out, it's a little bit different. Some like falls and, you know, they go out and have a bee sting versus, um, a major incident. Breaks your arm and, you know, medications and different things like that. So ambulance service is not my business. I don't know about it. All I know is if I'm at home with my family, something happens and I call nine one one. Somebody, somebody dang well better show up. Kind of caught myself cussing there. So I apologize, but.
Well, based off of that, I think it's imperative that we have those conversations with Chief Musavi to see what his department may need in the future. So we can plan for it and it's not a, oh, where are we going to find the money type situation? And I, I think, you know, there's some messaging that needs to go out to the community as a whole to let them know that, hey, we're, we're on top of this. We're not behind the eight ball. We're ahead of the curve. We've planned for things. We, we're planning for, uh, future growth. I mean, this is a small town with a huge daytime population, with a major interstate that runs through it. What people don't understand is if you only have two ambulances servicing this town and one of them's transporting somebody to Floyd and something happens on the interstate. Then what do you do? What is your weight? What are the plans for that to make sure that our town is covered? That's all I'm concerned about. I don't care if you, you get XYZ, what it, what the costs are within reason to make sure that when an elderly person picks up that phone, because they're having chest pains, they're, they're taking care of. That's, that's all I care about. Now, I know Chief Musavi has, has addressed that with me and we've had numerous phone calls and conversations, but those people's safety is paramount to everything that we do here on this board. It's the basic fundamental of government. So, I, I think we should continue those conversations and be a little bit more specific with what the needs of the community are. But at the same time, be able to put the message out, uh, of, hey, here's what the town is doing as a whole. And I think that would simmer down some of the anxiety or look, you can get on Facebook and say whatever you want. You, you, you can, you can go out here and unless you know the business and you know what's the, the ins and outs, the everyday Joe out here doesn't really care. They just care that when they pick the phone up, somebody's coming. That's all they care about. And at the end of the day, we're all liable as a whole. If we just drop the ball and go, it's not our problem. It's the county's. I, I just never want to operate like that. I, I just don't think that that's, that's very wise. And the average Joe doesn't need to know the ins and outs. They shouldn't have to know the ins and outs. So I, I think we, if we have to set up a, a committee or if we need to have regular meetings once a week, that would benefit us to make sure that at the end of the day, we don't have a room full of people going, or someone, something happens, answering questions of why we dropped the ball. So that's my only concern. That's why I brought it up. I've had numerous people ask me about it and I, I said, I would mention it, but I have complete faith in you and the chief and Chief Musavi. And I, like I said, we, we were talking about this long before all this stuff started. And I, like I said, I don't care about the silliness. I just care about when people call nine one one, somebody's coming. I know the police are showing up. I know fire is showing up. I'm confident. So same with EMS.
Charlie, I actually found that, that.
Yeah.
Charlie, I actually found that, that, because I shared it on, I shared it to my, my district. Chief Musavi has assured the town of Sellersburg that because of the newly acquired ambulances and addition of firefighters and paramedics EMS services within Tri Township's area of coverage will have better EMS service than the rest of the county. And it goes on from there, but that's the gist of it.
And one of the board members, I think the board vice president, Ray Drier, actually reached out to me late last week, and board president Dale Cook, and I've had a conversation here recently as well about stuff. And I think to your point, I think they're kinda putting some stuff together on what they may or may not need or what they're looking at doing and is there a place for the council to fit into that somehow? And what that looks like obviously would be up to you, but to your point, those conversations have, have, have happened, have been happening and are continuing to happen to make sure that our residents are covered regardless of what happens at the county level.
So you still wanna get to a level where we're just maintaining or we should be better?
So, so would it, would it be in our interest to maybe have like a workshop or have Amir here during a meeting to talk about this?
I'd say that's completely, if you all wanna do that, I'm sure he'd be completely open to that. If you wanna have a workshop, I'm sure he'd be completely open to that, however you, really however you wanna do it.
Would any of you like to do so?
I'm not opposed to that at all.
I think it'd be presented to our community directly.
So maybe we can just add them on the agenda as new business.
Yeah, have them come in and talk. Or, I mean, however you wanna do it, it's just as long as we're getting the messaging out. I, I just, I just, like I said, I have a lot of, a lot of people that they have no idea what's going on. As long as they know something, it makes them feel at ease that, hey, they're in good hands. That's it.
Because Amir has done a great job for this community.
So in your, your information, Scott, has New Chapel rebounded at all where they were? Were they somewhere near where they were at capacity or do you have any information?
I have, and I'll be very careful with, with discussing a private entity in a public meeting, because I don't know their business model. I don't know how they're operating, I don't know their manpower levels, they don't check in with me, just like any other service. I'm sure they have extended wait times or, look, there's, for a long time, there's been abuse of the 911 system. My tummy hurts, call an ambulance. That has to stop. Or, hey, I'm having migraines, call an ambulance. Now, obviously, if you can't get up off the floor and you're, you're at home alone, you don't have any transportation or you're elderly or, or something like you have disability, obviously someone has to come and look at you. But the, the, every, across the nation, every EMS service has those issues. But, you know, I think if you watch the local media and you see some of the stuff that's transpired over the last, say, six months, I, I think we would be foolish to sit up here and say that they're operating at the same capacity that they were, because that's not the case. My, our job, or my feeling about our job is to look into the future to say, how do you rectify this situation? How do you plan and prepare down the road? What is best for the town of Sellersburg and its residents? Not for me. You know, I'm trained in most of that stuff. I, I know I can take care of my family. What about the people that can't? That's what I'm concerned about. And, and I, I just never wanna fall behind the eight ball of, of, I know Floyd County has canceled their contract. So I, I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't know the business model, I don't know the, the manpower levels, you know, you can listen and hear whatever you wanna hear on Facebook and YouTube, that's all great. Any, any Joe Schmo can get out there and say what they wanna say. Now, very few of them have facts, some do, some don't. But that type of stuff is out there and it causes your average citizen a lot of anxiety or issues or questions that it's, it behooves us to answer and say, hey, here's the plan. And that's.
So, so if you're, if you're in Sellersburg at this point and you call for emergency medical services, it's going to be either Tri Township or New Chapel. That's the only two options, correct?
That's the only two that, that will send, unless it's some convalescence run or something like, I think there's another private entity in town or in the area. It'll most likely be dispatched to New Chapel. However, if there's extended wait or something that they can't cover, if they're out of the district, Tri Township will pick it up. Again, what happens when Tri Township's tied up on an accident up here on the interstate? We've had several in the last couple of weeks. Then what do you do? And that's why I said, is it funding for equipment, is it funding for manpower, is it funding for?
Excellent point.
Additional stuff that, that we need to do? I mean, that's looking down the road. No one's saying give them a blank check, but I think we need to do our part to make sure that our residents are taken care of.
Agreed. Okay, all right. I was gonna say, probably great discussion and everything, so appreciate you bringing that up, Scott. Everybody getting involved, wanting to discuss. I know, like I said, Troy and I have talked about it as well, so I don't know if it's something Ready 2.0 that I got in support at some point or another, I don't know if it's a conversation ever had, you know, so that's, that's another thing. County commissioners or whatever it may be, as far as our perspective is, maybe we look into, I guess they have in a workshop and maybe, maybe consider and have a budget item, line item for the future growth of that or raising something in our fee system that we have as well. So, but thanks again. Like I said, all we've had, we've had a lot going on around town. Like I said, guys look like they're doing a great job on the striping. It's gonna be something different for everybody to look at, so it's gonna be, how many people's gonna park alongside the road and, and I guess my question on that is, is, is it gonna be a white line? Is it gonna be a dotted line? I mean, is there a?
So the white, the dot lines are just to mark where they go.
Well, I know that.
So they were doing yellow.
But, but once it's a solid white line, does that give someone still the availability to park on the side of the road?
Yellow means no parking.
Huh?
Yellow means no parking.
Okay, okay, all right, good. Said, I'm hoping that your park board and recreation board are talking, follow music opportunities at Wilkinson Park. I know, like I said, I've continued to have some sponsors that are willing to participate, so I just wanna bring that up. Also, I know a lot of people's doing a lot of watering probably right now, so I don't know, I'm assuming that our water is, is working out well, moving forward on that. As the chief stated, school does start on Thursday, so, and he used the word be patient. So please be patient out there and understand that, hey, I don't think they're gonna probably make any kid tardy for the first few days and let everybody find out what this traffic pattern's gonna be like. So, so make sure you know who's around you, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say tonight, so. Michelle, do you have anything? Okay, all right. Well, after that, I asked for a moment for adjournment.
So I'll move.
Motion by Matt, does a second. Second by Scott, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
710.